Yes, there we go. All right. Good evening. It's six thirty, so I am going to call to order the Port Orchard City Council meeting for April twenty eighth pursuant to govern- the governor's stay at home, stay safe order. The city will take action on necessary and routine business. The city is prohibited from contacting meetings unless this meeting is not conducted in person and instead provides options for the public to attend through telephone access, internet, or other means of remote access, and also provides the ability for persons attending the meeting not in person to hear each other at the same time. Therefore, we are conducting this meeting through our Zoom app here. So with that, I will, uh, meeting is called to order and I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We are to the approval of our agenda. We have a number of items on the agenda this evening and any additions, subtractions, moving things around tonight?
I think that one of the things that's important to point out is-
I'm gonna mute that caller, whoever it was.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, thank you. And any discussion of the agenda? All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We are not taking citizen comments on these Zoom meetings, but we are taking written comments and Brandy's got one that she'll discuss in her director's report later this evening, so. Also, we're on to the consent agenda. We have a number of items on that consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe and a second by Councilmember Kuchardi to approve the consent agenda as presented. An important item on there, and we just got so many business items, we slid it into consent, is that affordable housing contract with KCR. We're moving forward with that and we'll be sending a press release about that and it's very timely that that's gonna be put in place. So I'm not sure who the caller is, but I'm going to, I'm gonna mute your on here. And so we are, have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. We are to our business items, the first of which is adoption of an ordinance delegating authority to the finance director to waive late fees, penalties, and make payment arrangements as applicable. Mr. Crocker, do you have a staff report on this?
I do, I do. Thank you, Mayor. So to back up, the governor has mandated that municipal utilities waive penalties for delinquent accounts during the COVID nineteen pandemic. And this ordinance authorizes the finance director to comply with the governor's order. This ordinance applies to water, sewer, and storm utility accounts of the city. It also grants discretion to the finance director for waivers and other contacts once we are outside of the emergency period. We are currently under the parameters for that discretion and that will be set by policy by the full council. The policy is currently under development due to the limited resources and staff time addressing essential functions and will be submitted to the utility and finance committee for review in regular course over the next month or so. I think what's important is that this ordinance, again, gets us compliant with the governor's order as well as extends the waiver to sewer and storm utility accounts with the full intention that I did not want to rush out a bad utility policy on payment arrangements. So I wanted to take some time and fully develop that and come back to the committees in our regular course of business over the next months or so. So staff would recommend council approve the utility waiver that is attached.
Councilmember Luca Reli.
I move to adopt an ordinance delegating authority to the finance director to waive late fees, penalties, and make payment arrangements as applicable in the attached ordinance.
Second.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, and as Noah pointed out, this is really dealing with the fee waiver aspect of it. We've got a little bit of time till we think people are gonna start truly falling past due and we're gonna work on some better payment arrangement, giving Noah some authority to work out payment arrangements, because I think that's gonna be important piece over the, you know, going through the remainder of the year as, as, as people fall past due on their utility accounts. So other questions for myself or Noah on this matter? Okay, hearing none, the, you'd be voting on an adoption of an ordinance delegating authority to the finance director to waive late fees, penalties, and make payment arrangements as applicable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance is passed. So we are on to our second item, which is an adoption of an ordinance, ordinance reclassifying property located at twenty eight forty-three Herald Drive Southeast from commercial mixed use to business professional mixed use. Mr. Bond, do you have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. The city received an application for a site-specific rezone for the property addressed as twenty eight forty-three Herald Drive Southeast to change from commercial, commercial mixed use to business professional mixed use. The city of Port Orchard Hearing Examiner held a public hearing consistent with the requirements of POMC twenty point two-two zero-six-zero on January thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and issued a recommendation for consideration by the city council on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty. Proposed rezone will correct a non-conforming use and building type that would prevent the current residents of the home from rebuilding in the event of a total loss. The staff recommendation is to adopt an ordinance granting approval of the site-specific rezone from commercial mixed use to business professional mixed use.
Anyone wishing to make a motion on this matter?
I will. I move to adopt an ordinance as presented, granting approval of the site-specific rezone from commercial mixed use to business professional mixed use for the property addressed as two eight four-three Herald Drive Southeast.
Second.
Second, who? I didn't catch that, Jay?
Jay, yeah.
Okay, so a council member, Ashby, made a motion. Councilmember Rosa Pepe made the second. And do you have any questions of Mr. Bond regarding, regarding this rezon? Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah, is this going to be the only parcel in that area that is business professional?
Yes, it is. And to clarify, the comp plan, usually when you do amendments, there's a comp plan amendment and a zoning amendment. However, business professional mixed use and commercial mixed use are under the same umbrella of the comp plan commercial designation. And so this is one of the few times when we use the quasi judicial rezone process to, to change something. This property owner came to us because they were buying the property and as part of their, their financing or, or insurance concerns, they could not rebuild the house. It's also right next to one of the properties we are trying to buy from the county for the roundabout on the Bethel Corridor. And so it, that, that, that other property that's adjacent to this, that's commercial mixed use is actually probably going to end up as a stormwater pond and part of new transportation improvements. So from that standpoint, it, it still allows for mixed use in the area, but it, it doesn't require a comp plan to fix this, a comp plan amendment to fix this nonconformity.
So in reality, that side of the Herald Drive would have in the future, right now it's a somewhat of a field and wetland, it'll have a storm, storm infrastructure on it. And then this is the only other piece of land on that side of the street, I believe, down to whatever that next street back there is.
Correct, and it may make sense to look at changing this to residential in the comp plan in the future for like an R two zone. But for this process, the comp plan amendment was gonna take a year and the quasi judicial process took four months.
Councilmember Deener.
So sorry, I lost my packet there for a moment, but I wanted to note that for the record, this was reviewed. The site-specific rezon was reviewed at the land use committee as well, and we concurred with the applicant's request.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Bond? Hearing none, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance reclassifying property located at twenty eight forty-three Herald Drive Southeast from commercial mixed use to business professional mixed use. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Does anyone oppose? Hearing none, the reclassification of the property ordinance has been approved. So we're on to item C, adoption of an interim ordinance temporarily suspending approval and permit expiration and tolling procedural deadlines for processing land use application. Is this you, Mr. Bond, or Ms. Archer?
I think either of us can probably speak to it. I'll, I'll take a stab at it and let her correct me if I misspeak. This ordinance, we, we've been hoping that the governor would issue an order, take, taking this sort of action and not requiring that we do it locally. Currently, we have timelines in our code that require us to issue decisions within ninety or a hundred and twenty days and also require, if somebody submits an application and it's not complete, they have ninety days to submit the, the missing information. And because everybody is shut down right now, people are having a hard time getting this work done or getting these materials in. And there's also outstanding permits that could expire. And so this ordinance is, is going to have the effect of pausing these review timelines from the date that the governor's order took effect construction activities, I believe that's the twenty-fifth of March, until either the ordinance expires in six months or is repealed by council at some future date. And this will give us some flexibility and give applicants flexibility, except where deadlines are specified in state law that we can't, that we can't change. Is that, does that generally summarize things, Ms. Archer?
It does, yes. To provide a little, a bit of context, a number of cities have taken this action, but not all. And again, this is something that's necessitated by the stay-home order and, and the docket of permits that are out there and the applications that this particular city has received. Thus, thus, this is somewhat on an emergency basis that we're asking that you review this and not that, that's why we didn't go through your, your process of your committees and for that, it's based on that emergency.
And I'll add that there is one particular permit that if this is not passed tonight, their application expires today if, and they would have to then reapply for something. And so by taking the emergency action tonight, there's at least one person who has helped greatly because they had ninety days to get something to us and they've been unable to get the work from their engineer. So and so we are waiting to notify them whether their application is in fact expired or whether they will have additional time to submit information.
And I believe Director Bond touched on this a bit, but this will also impact projects that are underway but will not finish within the time of their, their permit and that we're seeing more and more of that. You know, the governor recently, as of Friday, lifted the construction portion of the construction prohibition, but the construction industry is, is very badly hit by all of this. And, and so we're anticipating that the tail of this economic crisis is gonna last into the future. So this, this stalls for at least the time being, the lapse or expiration of those, or those permits.
And, and just to note that we will have to hold a hearing on this within sixty days of adoption, so that's scheduled probably for sometime in June, I suspect.
Okay. Mr. Clausen, did you raise your hand?
Yes, I did. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an interim ordinance as presented, temporarily suspending approval and permit expiration and tolling procedural deadlines for processing land use applications.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Deener. Do we have any more questions for Ms. Archer or Mr. Bond? Councilmember Deener, go ahead.
Sure. The timelines that are set out in Title fifteen and twenty, does that reference the RCW timeframe? Are those more explicit timeframes for internal processing goals?
Both is the answer. For the most part, they're, they're your internal deadlines that are set pursuant to the statute that delegates to you the authority to set those deadlines. There's one, and I think it's referenced in the staff report, the hundred and twenty day deadline. That can be deviated from by action of the council and this would constitute the action of the council necessary to deviate from that statute. But for the most part, we can't deviate from the deadline set by statute. So we're just deviating from those that are set in your code.
Yeah, the, the curiosity there is that it reads should not exceed versus shall not exceed, but I'm not gonna split hairs over that. I think it's a wise thing to do and I think it's reasonable and responsible for people that are also feeling the pinch.
I had one other question. As I heard the motion read, it occurred to me that we did not include in the motion the declaration of emergency. And I'm just wondering, I think I've heard that in the past when we've passed interim ordinances and declared an emergency, that that was part of the motion and I wanna make sure that doesn't need to be included here for the record.
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, it should have read, I move to adopt an interim emergency ordinance. So if we can just get a friendly amendment to that motion.
Mr. Mayor, with approval of the second, I would amend the motion to include the emergency provision.
Second.
A second, I think it was Councilmember Deener made the second, so do you concur?
Concur.
Okay, all right. So we have an amendment recognizing that this is an emergency action. Other questions or comments? Remember Rosa Pepe, go ahead.
So just wanted to echo, I think Councilmember Deener said it eloquently enough, but doing what we can for the community. And also that I do like the fact that it has a six months before the suspension at the end of six months, so that allows us to take a look at what's going on. So nicely done to all.
All right. And any last, last call? And so you'll be voting on adoption of an interim emergency ordinance temporarily suspending approval of permit expiration and tolling procedural deadlines for processing land use applications. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the emergency action has been taken. We are to item D, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with American West Construction LLC the twenty twenty library water damage and roof repair. Mr. Dorsey, I believe this is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilmembers. On March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, the city established a list of qualified contractors with twenty MRSC small works roster, which is in Resolution A attached Exhibit A, for the main category, facility construction, repair, and maintenance hazardous material abatement in a subcategory with very lengthy carpentry, interior carpentry, rough gutters, downspouts, cleaning, repair, insulation, painting, exterior painting, interior roof construction, or maintenance mold remediation, removal, perform twenty twenty library water damage and roof repair. Twenty twenty pursuant to Resolution zero-one-nine-one-seven, the city's public works department emailed a request for proposals for the twenty twenty library water damage and roof repair from all MRSC small roster contractors. We then received six bids, which included tax, labor, equipment, materials, and fees. And they were received prior to April fourteenth, two thousand twenty, which was the deadline. And so the lowest bid, bids ranged from a high of eighty-nine to eighty-two ninety-nine to a low of sixty-one, nine fifty-two seventy. On April fifteenth, two thousand twenty, the city's public works department staff completed the MRSC mandatory bidder responsibility checklist and did determine that American West Construction LLC's bid of sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy cents was the lowest qualified and responsive bid. The public works department has confirmed the bidding requirements for the public work have been followed. And this item is necessary and routine for the following reasons. This project is necessary to preserve the city's critical facility as it is existing leaks in multiple areas that continue to degrade the structural integrity of this section of the building. That recommends that the city council adopt Resolution zero-one-two dash two-zero, thereby approving contracts. Thereby approving contract C zero-four-one dash two-zero with American West Construction LLC for the twenty twenty library water damage and roof repair contract in the amount of sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy cents with the contract term beginning May fourth, two thousand twenty, and ending June fifth, two thousand twenty.
Councilmember Deener.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution number twelve dash twenty, thereby approving contract number CO four-one dash twenty with American West Construction LLC for the twenty twenty library water damage and roof repair contract in the amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy cents, applicable sales tax included.
Second it.
The second by Councilmember Clausen, motion by Councilmember Deener. This is important to note here. Chris Hammer, our new assistant city engineer, was instrumental in getting us to where we're at here tonight. We were looking, we had estimates initially three times or more this dollar amount and Kristen went down himself, you know, versus hiring a consultant, we were able to do this, this body of work to get the ad-ready specs out in-house, which saved us a ton of money. And so I'm really proud of the work that we brought us here today. I mean, we never wanna be fixing leaking roofs and water damage, but it happened and you know, this is gonna be perfect to get, you know, with the library shut down right now, they'll start construction next week and this work will be done right about the time the library should be looking to return to operations. And we won't be have to be worrying about moving people out or tenting areas off while we're under construction because a lot of buildings not occupied right now, so. Councilmember Deener.
So I recall that when we first looked at this, we weren't really sure what the ultimate damage would look like and I think we peeled it back a little bit and now we are where we are today. What, what did the ultimate damage look like?
Three of the four scuppers had leaked and, and done water and structural damage to either the, the top plate or the framing in the walls. Could have been worse, could have been better, could have been all four, could have been, wish it was just one. But three of the four scuppers had leaked and we're gonna modify all four scuppers so we don't have a, a future problem. And the scupper is, it's got a flat roof. It's a, it's a, what catches the water off the roof and brings it down the downspout. So, other questions? Okay, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving a contract with American West Construction LLC for the twenty twenty library water damage roof repair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You know, this contract has been approved. So we are to item E, adoption of a resolution adopting a continuity of operations, continuity of government plan. I think we've talked about this just a little bit here lately. Chief Brown, do you have a staff report for us?
I do. So as part of the city's emergency management planning, the department directors and the mayor have developed a continuity of operations, continuity of government, which is a COOP slash COG plan. This plan is a roadmap to ensure primary mission essential functions continue to be performed during a wide range of emergencies to include localized acts of nature, accidents, epidemics, and technological or attack-related emergencies. Any event that makes it impossible for employees to work in the regular facility could result in a full or partial activation of the continuity plan. Plan was developed in accordance with the Federal Emergency Management Agency's guidance for non-federal entities. And I wanna say I really, really appreciate everybody working hard on this to include council. So our recommendation is that the council approve the continuity of operations, continuity of government plan.
Mayor, I'd move to adopt a resolution adopting the continuity of operations, continuity of government plan.
Second it.
Got a second by Councilmember Clausen, a motion by Councilmember Kuchardi. Any more questions? Anybody wanna grill the chief on paragraph four on page eighty? Or have we done that enough?
He's missing a semicolon on page seventy-nine.
That, that's probably true.
I'm quite impressed. Did you hand paint that buck that's behind your head?
I did. This is, this is my home office.
That's the paint-by-numbers thing that they used to have.
Oh, wow.
That's the new trivia question. If you can guess my background, you win a prize.
Okay. I took us down that rabbit hole. I apologize. Any other questions for the chief about our, our COOP? All right, hearing, hearing none. All in favor of approving the continuing, contin- the COOP plan, let's call it that. I'll say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the plan has been approved.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, great job on this. I mean, unfortunately, sometime we'll probably have to deploy something like this and what a great tool for us to have. So congratulations, Chief Brown, on the body of work. It's impressive.
Thank you. It's, it's all of us, so, but I thank you for that, sir.
All right, we're to item F, is approval of a contract with Summit Law Service, services in the area of labor negotiations and relations. Debbie Lund is with us this evening, so Debbie, I believe this is your staff report.
Good evening. This is a concept that was mentioned to you at the work session just last week. COVID nineteen has presented its many challenges for us, including those in the labor relations realm. When contracts were negotiated just over a year ago with your union groups, none of this was foreseen. So trying to apply current language to current situations is a little difficult in some cases and some differences of opinion arise. It's been a desire of our new legal counsel, Ms. Archer, that the city engage the services of a different attorney to handle the actual negotiations themselves, just to prevent that kind of conflict of interest that might otherwise arise for her, trying to help our employees and then sit across the table from them. So this contract is with Summit Law, attorney by the name of Sophia Maybe, who's well-known in the human resources world, a frequent speaker at our conferences. She has the time and capacity to take us on as a client. So with your approval, we'd like to authorize the mayor to sign the contract to engage her services as needed.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
Are we entering a contract with Sophia directly or with Summit Law Firm?
With Summit Law Firm, I believe.
Correct. And Sophia is identified as the primary attorney.
She would be the primary, but if she's not available, they do have a lot of very capable attorneys, so just wanted to make sure it was with the firm.
Yep.
With that, Mr. Mayor, then I would move to authorize a mayor to execute an agreement with Summit Law to provide labor law services as needed.
Second. Second by Councilmember Deener. So any questions of myself or Ms. Lund related to this matter? Councilmember Rosa Pepe, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment. In a previous life, I had dealt with Summit Law Group and found them very professional and very helpful in several issues that were at a transit agency I was with, so nice to see them coming on board.
They are, I, I hear the go-to agent law firm in this realm, so I got Councilmember Kuchardi and then Councilmember Deener.
Yeah, I was probably picked up, but just for the minutes, notice how John specifically spoke to the agreement with Summit Law and not with the individual attorney, just for the record.
Yep, and that was his motion.
Yep.
Yep. Councilmember Deener.
I just wanted to say that I, I think Sophia and Summit Law sound pretty impressive. Very deep background and so I'm confident that we'll have a good working relationship. I also like that they said that they're rather unique across the nation perhaps, and that we can pay for the value of their work based on a perception we have, which is, is rather unique. And so anyways, I like what we saw and I think we'll have a good relationship.
And so, and we have an issue right now. We want to, to get before them, but the, the best thing about this is we'll deal with this issue, but it gets them on board so that we're ready to roll. We know who our contract attorney is gonna be as we go into our next round of labor negotiations. Mr. Clausen, do you have a question?
No, just a comment as well. I've had the good fortune of working with Summit Law for over thirty-five years and they are an outstanding- for over thirty-five years, and they are an outstanding firm to work with in regards to labor law and labor negotiations. So we're very fortunate to be able to bring them on as a resource.
Rave reviews, I'm hearing. All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, you'll be voting on the approval of a contract with Summit Law for legal services in the area of labor negotiations and relations. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion is, the contract is approved. Okay, we are on, we have two items G and H are both related to our fields up behind Givens and a couple of leases. So the first is the approval of an addendum to real property lease agreement number zero four two dash one five with the South Kids Up Western Little League to Givens Field number one, two, and three. Clerk Reinderson?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So the current real property lease agreement with the South Kids Up Western Little League being a nonprofit organization will expire April thirtieth of twenty twenty. The lease agreement is for Givens Field number one, two, and three, which is behind the active club building located at ten twenty-five Tacoma Avenue. The new addendum is a lease for one year commencing May first, twenty twenty, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, with an automatic renewal for four additional periods of one year. In addition, the addendum reflects changes approved by both organizations to update possession of the fields. South Kids Up Western Little League possesses possesses Givens Field one and two from November seventeenth through July fourteenth during the term of their lease. The South Kids Up Pee Wee Association shall have sole possession of the Givens Field one and two from July fifteenth through November sixteenth during the term of the lease. This item has been identified as necessary and routine related to the governor proclamation, proclamation twenty dash twenty-eight for the reason that this contract will expire at the end of the month, and we would need to negotiate a whole new agreement versus an attach an addendum to the current agreement. With that, staff recommends approval of the lease addendum as presented.
Okay. And Brandy, just for clarification, I just, and then I'll call on councilmember Luke Guerelli. I know that Pee Wee or Little League's got ahold of you. Did you ever connect with Pee Wees with these changes?
No, they did not respond to me reaching out to them. So.
But, but they did provide input to the changes in the lease.
Correct. They did both agree to the updated changes of the turnover. I'm just waiting to hear back from them to approve the addendum.
And then sign, yes. Normally, we would have it signed before it came before the council. But we didn't have that luxury because it was expiring. So councilmember Luke Guerelli?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute an addendum to lease agreement number zero four two dash one five with the South Kids Up Western Little League, thereby leasing Givens Fields numbers one and two, and three for a one-year term with automatic renewals outlined in the contract as presented.
Second. Councilmember Rose, I'm happy seconded this. So, and so the annual rent, rental fee is a dollar?
The current agreement.
Okay. All right, councilmember Kachardi.
Yeah, just a quick question regarding liability, right? We're leasing this through SKWLL. It looks like a nonprofit organization, it looks incorporated down below. And then there's language in here that also allows for usage by the Pee Wees. What about insurance on that? Are we, are we all covered from both of those organizations? The event that's just kind of an interesting way the addendum talks to it.
Correct. I do have current certificates of liability with endorsements for both organizations on file for each year.
And the requirements are laid out at pages one eighty-seven and, and one eighty-eight of your packet, the insurance required of them.
And they're both, that's what I'm saying, they're both doing it.
Correct, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
In addition, I know this isn't directly related, but they also provide us a concussion agreement on both agencies or both Little League and Pee Wees before they start their season that they've followed the concussion protocol. That's at a requirement of our insurance, AWC, RMSA.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for the clarity.
Part of the reason we traveled this path versus, and I'll call in just a second, Mr. Clausen, we historically have done five-year agreements, and we did, you know, we're in the midst of updating our parks plan, and this gives us a lot more flexibility by, it's their one-year agreements and with, with options to renew one year, future additional one-year agreements. So this gives us a lot more flexibility if, for some reason, we want to change the use of those fields. Councilmember Clausen?
Yeah, just a question. Do we have a, a drawing or something that indicates which is field one, two, or three? I think I understand which is which, but just to make sure.
I do. And for some reason, it was not attached to the contract, but there is a diagram that outlines one, two, and three.
Okay. So hopefully, there won't be any argument amongst the groups, which is which.
Well, I'll just make sure that it's attached to the, to the addendum, and then I can send out a copy of that map to the full council tomorrow morning.
Yeah, they've had, that map's not changed in the twelve years that I've been involved with it.
My, if my memory serves you, that one is to the north, two is adjacent to that, and three is the field that doesn't get shared. It's Little League's game field there.
Right.
That would be my understanding as well. But just, you know, you get two different organizations talking about fields. If they had a diagram that indicated they're just reduce any discussion.
Yeah. And Brandy has it, just to get included in your package. Councilmember Ashby?
Well, the lease, the original lease does describe the parcels in written form.
Yeah.
Okay. But I think we've got that covered. We just didn't get it, get it included in your packet. So with that, any other comments or questions? Okay, you'll be voting on the approval of an.
Mayor, I have one more real quick. Just again, I'm sorry to beat a dead horse. I'm just not seeing in here where the Pee Wees are identified as a less C. So I guess I'm just confused by that.
The next, the next one.
Oh, we're going up next. Okay, this is the first one. Okay, okay. Because the title, okay. Thank you.
Yep, two different actions. Yep. So, all right, good, good question, though. So this, this, what you're voting on right now is the approval of the addendum to the real property leases, lease agreement to agreement number zero four two dash fifteen with South Kids Up Western Little League to, for leases, Givens Fields one, two, and three. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the addendum is approved. Now we're to item H, which is the approval of addendum to real property lease agreement number zero four three dash one five with South Kids Up Pee Wee Association to Givens Fields numbers one and two for the base and the basement of the active club building. Clerk Reinderson?
Yes. So this is the same lease except for, it is with the South Kids Up Pee Wee Association. The areas that they will be leasing would be jointly fields one and two with the addition of the basement of the activity club, which is located at ten twenty-five Tacoma Avenue. They both have agreed to the swap times of the South Kids Up Little League taking possession of field one and two from November seventeenth through July fourteenth, and then South Kids Up Pee Wee Association shall take sole possession of the Givens Field one and two from July fifteenth through November sixteenth for the term of the lease. With that, staff approves the addendum with, excuse me, as presented.
Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute an addendum to lease agreement number forty-three dash fifteen with the South Kids Up Pee Wee Association, thereby leasing fields number one and two in the basement of the active club building for a one-year term with automatic renewals outlined in the contract as presented.
Second it.
Second by councilmember Clausen. Further discussion, as, as you heard, this is the similar agreement to the Pee, Little League for Pee Wees only fields one and two, and then additionally, the lease of the basement of the active club. Any questions or concerns? Comments? Okay, you'll be voting on this addendum of the lease for Pee Wee, South Kids Up Pee Wees. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the addendum is approved. We are to our last item, item I, which is the approval of the April fourteenth, twenty twenty council meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of April fourteenth as distributed.
Second. Second by councilmember Kachardi, a motion by councilmember Clausen. Discussion of those minutes. I'll have, and I know I have one abstention. So all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, and one abstention by councilmember Luke Guerelli.
Although I viewed it.
All right. So we have no discussion items. I figured we got halfway through the alphabet tonight in business items. So I didn't want to push my luck. And we'll go to council committees. I don't believe finance, finance gave their report last week. They had a meeting a week ago or two weeks ago, and your next meeting is second Tuesday, whatever that is of next month. And do you have anything else to report, Mr. Clausen, other than that?
No, it just said the agenda says it's to be determined, but it does indicate five thirty of the second Tuesday each month. So I guess we've determined it already.
Yes, Brandy can correct that. So I'll take that TBD off there. And, and I don't believe economic development tourism is met, but they do have a meeting scheduled in May, May eighteenth, it appears. Utilities hasn't met, but they have a May nineteenth meeting scheduled. And sewer advisory is planning on meeting May twenty-seventh. I see June first for land use. Transportation met this evening. Councilmember Ashby, would you like to give a report?
Yes, we did meet just before our council meeting. And our first item of business was we agreed upon a statement of our committee's role so that we know what we're, what work were there to do. So that was good. And then we spent most of our time talking about our six-year transportation improvement plan, and then our twenty-year transportation improvement plan, those of, both of which are included in our comp plan every year. Is that correct? Say yes or no? Yeah. And then we went over a review of our transportation impact fees. And that's where we spent a lot of our time was discussing our tier one and tier two tips. The tier one is relatively financially constrained. That's our six years. And then our tier two is out twenty years, and we don't always have, that's not financially constrained. We did make a recommendation, and we'll be bringing to work study, our next work study, a recommendation for an update on our transportation impact fees. We then also talked about some grant opportunities and some grant work that Chris Hammer's been working on and will be submitting. We don't know our success. So when he's working on is for a section of our Bethel corridor, it's federal dollars. It's highly competitive. But it doesn't hurt to apply, and that's what we're doing. And that is basically what we talked about, very abbreviated, discarded J. Either one of you have anything to add?
I think we're hoping to bring our recommendation, recommendations, plural, to the next work study.
Yes.
If it can be.
That is our goal, to have a work study next month. And maybe we'll even see each other in person, but don't hold your breath. Yeah. Okay, thank you for your report. I wouldn't assume nothing from lodging tax. You have a meeting with the hoteliers, have you, councilmember Rosepeffy?
No, and it's going to be interesting after we start seeing what, what comes in after the COVID's finished.
Councilmember Luke Guerelli, will there be Christmas?
Yes, absolutely. It may look a little different this year, but we're going to have it. I do see that we are, the meeting now is at three thirty on the third Tuesday, but there's also a utilities meeting on that same day at five, and then there's a council meeting. So that's quite a lot in a row. Just not sure.
You're, you seem to be involved in all of those committees. Maybe you're gonna have to do some rescheduling with some folks.
Well, I didn't, I didn't schedule these. These just popped up.
Okay.
Somebody else scheduled them. I'm not sure how that worked.
I think the utility committee involved a number of people and calendars, but in the council meeting, we're probably not going to change, but in the festival.
Right. Previously, we, we had, we were meeting on a Monday. So maybe that we can go back to that unless there's our staff issues, or I don't, maybe because of.
So it's you and Brandy and Bill, I think.
Cindy, I apologize. I'll just double check what you need, but I think it's a typo. It should be. Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll work that out. Outside agencies, I have a couple things. I guess just Department Emergency Management, we met today and they were, we had a presentation about, you know, gosh, I'm a loss for words right now, but to reserve, resume, resuming life as we used to know it, or if we can get there. And then part of the beginning of that meeting, though, was about, we talked, they talked about test kits, and you hear a lot in the media about that the test kits are now readily, and we do have sufficient test kits now for anyone who's symptomatic. So they aren't testing asymptomatic individuals. So I just wanted to pride that clarification here in Kitsap County. We have sufficient supply for anyone who has symptoms, regardless of your age, or you're a first responder, or any of that, like the other restrictions that used to be in place. So with the mayor's report, see here, I've got a number, you got, I forwarded a letter from the Home Builders' Association, the Kitsap Home Builders. I hope it's a moot point now. There has, they were asking the council to consider passing a, its own order, overriding the governor and allowing construction to resume. And I just told them that I would forward that to the council members and bring it up in my mayor's report tonight. You could, you could direct us to do that, but I'm, I wouldn't recommend that. And I think since they sent that letter, the, the governor has relaxed some things related to the construction industry, which I think is a, is a positive step in the right direction. So is there any desire for us to, from any of the council members? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna move on from that F issue. Staffing, I have a report here someplace that I've missed. Do it from the top of my head. Debbie's doing a great little report about once a week, and we have eighty employees, rough, you know, we have police and public works that teleworking doesn't work for them very well. Nearly as effective in their jobs when they do it that way. And so that's represents, we got fifty of our employees that come to, come to work really no differently other than social distancing and other precautions. We have about twenty people teleworking pretty consistently, and we have about ten people with various forms of leave on average that are taking leave and not with us on any given days. So just kind of give you an idea of what's going out there from a workforce standpoint. Public health, I did attend their meeting in the last week, and the outlook for our festivals is not positive, was really what Dr. Turner spoke to. She doesn't believe that, that we would be holding any festivals or public events at least until fall. And so, and that's just her professional opinion. You know, we'll see how things progress, but large gatherings probably aren't going to be something that are going to happen this, the spring or summer, is, is what was being shared with me. We have a number of organizations. You know, our fee isn't that large. It's, it's a hundred dollars. You know, the fireworks, Thaddeus wants to do the fireworks, and they're looking about having it later and not at Fourth of July. But they, they've asked, our code doesn't allow it, but they've asked for, because of. But they were, they've asked, our code doesn't allow it, but they've asked for, because of COVID, would we consider refunding that fee? And I'm not necessarily opposed to it because of this COVID situation, but I think if we did that for them, we probably need to do it for any of the nonprofits that that hold events if they wanted to apply. Is there an opinion on that out there?
Do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
We'll probably bring something back next, next, in two weeks. It's not time sensitive, but they just wanted an indication.
Yeah, could you also apply it to a future reschedule, like in two thousand and twenty-one?
Oh, that, I like that solution even better. And I guess, Charlie, could I do this just with an emergency order or administratively, probably?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want, so that's, that's really a good idea. Maybe we'll offer a credit to a future event if if you're, because then it's just a postponement.
I would suggest giving them the option of either or.
Okay, yes.
All right, I don't think, I don't think a hundred bucks should break anybody, but but yeah, I think it's just the right thing to do based on what's happening in the world. We've also, Brandy and I have been in contact with the Mayor Wheeler's office about the extended foot ferry service. We haven't signed those contracts yet because they're in support of the festivals, and if the festivals aren't going to happen, why should we run the ferry back and forth? So we're just kind of sitting on that right now and to see what happens. And if, you know, we might just eliminate a number of days and only provide that service when when we can have festivals. You saw, hopefully saw the governor's order yesterday. I know Councilmember Kachari's happy because golf can resume in in modified fashion, but also our recre, parks and recreation space can be reopened. So we're going to send a park, a press release, I plan to next Tuesday reopen our parks as they were previously. We are going in that press release, though, talk about the need to still follow the governor's order and social distance, not gathering. So we'll open up our parking lots and our restrooms at our parks as of next Tuesday, and I talked to the son of Kitsap's son about that today. We also got, were notified, I know Transit got a, what, thirteen million dollars, John, from the CARES Act?
Yeah, just a bit over thirteen.
Bit over thirteen million. The county got almost seven hundred thousand dollars. They're putting it to affordable housing, and most of the time, we don't qualify for anything. And the governor announced, I think it was last night or this morning, I think Charlie sent it to me, the, the, any county that has not received an award from CARES will get two hundred and fifty thousand, and any city, which would be us, that didn't get an award will get twenty-five thousand dollars. We have no idea if there's any strings attached to that or restrictions, but we've got some dollars coming, and more to come as we learn what the what the rules are for that money. We might have to spend it in a certain fashion, I don't know yet. And let's see, we're going to put a press release out probably tomorrow, sure by the end of the week, that the county, the state is done some preliminary design work on a roundabout at the intersection of Bay and the the state highway and Maple in front of KFC. The traffic light there is become a little bit obsolete, and they were going to do open houses in a very public process, but obviously, they can't. So they're going, we're going to conduct that online, and we're going to help with that and help promote that that process for the state. And I can't talk about specific dollars because no one I sign these agreements that says we can't, but somebody in my Rotary Club, their spouse works for Lowe's, and they shared with me today that they are, their sales over the same time last year on a daily basis are four times what they were. So everybody is supposed to be staying home, but maybe they are, they're staying at home painting and building a new deck and whatever else they're doing. But Lowe's, Lowe's sales are up considerably, even though many of our other businesses are are closed. So that's all I have on my mayor's report. Directors, Mr. Dorsey, do you have anything to share? Okay, Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I just wanted to report that we had our first public hearing with the hearing examiner on Zoom. I think it went very well, and actually, in terms of being able to share exhibits or put maps on display that people can view, I thought it worked better than an in-person meeting. And so I know that when this order is over, I don't believe we have the ability to use Zoom for hearings going forward. I think it it's probably going, it saves us money and is effective. So the idea that I had was that we may actually want to use this as a recording platform for future meetings, whether it's committees or hearings, because you can actually, in the the audio recording, you can pull up exhibits, and so while council members or committee members are speaking about a particular issue, there's a visual to go with that that isn't video, but it is a displayed map or other information. And so my thought would be to try using Zoom as the recording platform for our upcoming land use or economic development committee meeting, if the chairs and committee members are comfortable with having just the small camera on the entire group with the ability to display items from the packet. So I wanted to get feedback on that before we figure out how to to hold those upcoming meetings.
It's probably a good idea, in particular in those conference spaces where we have the large television, because we could project those images up on that large television as well as record it.
Are those archived well? How does records retention work with that?
So the, at the end of the meeting, you just, it asks you whether you want to save the video and audio to the cloud or download it, and in about three minutes, it downloads both a video and an audio file that you just save wherever you you direct the the system to save it. And so it's it's pretty good, and I think even Brandy mentioned that it's making minutes easier as well, because we have close-ups of everybody speaking, and you can, you can see these visuals when they're they're put up on the screen.
And just to chime in on the records piece of it, so it does record it in a, an MP four format, which is the required format that we have to upload to the state activist for electronic records. So it already meets the requirement, there's no transitioning in formats like we have to do now.
So what what we're hearing is it's better than the recording equipment we have in the council chamber. So, Nick, do you, there was a a letter, that was our only public comment that was sent. Brandy was going to touch base of it, it really affects Nick's department, and that has to do with the the beehives. Do you want to touch base on that?
Yeah, we've had a couple of complaints related to beekeeping in a residential neighborhood. There's a lot, I think it's about eight thousand square feet, and he's got something like eight beehives there. And I don't know whether it's it's how the beehives are being managed or the number of hives that are present, but we don't have any restrictions or regulations concerning beekeeping. And so Mr. Price has been doing a lot of research on this, and it's now working with Ms. Archer on on drafting some sort of standard that we can take forward for consideration that will either limit the number of hives that can be kept on an individual lot or provide further restrictions or have a ratio of hives to lot size so that you don't end up with somebody on a small lot keeping a ton of bees where they're going to bother neighbors.
So you're not going to be asking in the next budget for a beekeeper in the, in the planning department?
No, I I don't think so, though. It's possible Mr. Price is eventually going to need some protective equipment for, if he has to go investigate these things.
Yeah, it's true.
Not if he does it really fast.
Oh, no.
Important honeybees are, so we should, people have as many bees as they want.
Sounds like a sweet deal to me.
Mr. Bond, do you have anything else to share?
No, that's all.
Okay, Chief Brown?
Done.
Not a whole lot of updates. We have been doing the EOC every week, kind of shortened it up a little bit from doing it twice a week before. So far, everybody's doing well in the department. We've been working with DEM, so we're pretty good with PPE. Our calls for service are still kind of maintaining. I don't have the data for you, we're working on some regional numbers to bring everybody, hopefully by next council meeting. But for the most part, we haven't seen the type of drop that we were expecting to see with with the stay home, stay safe order, but I'll bring that to you next week.
Okay, so Chief, I think that's a, some motel in Nebraska.
Nope.
They got a corn festival, they got hunting, there's.
You're very close.
There's fishing, there's, there's carved fish in the back corner, too.
Yep, Montana.
Nope.
All right, moving on, Mr. Crocker, what do you have for us?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight? I see the fire department in the audience. Mr. Wiggins, do you want to share anything with us?
You got nothing.
You got nothing, all right. Well, with that, anything for the good of the order? Okay, with that, our meeting is adjourned, and maybe in Zoom in a couple of weeks, and maybe in person. More, stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you.